One minute to showtime. Yeah, based on a true story. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the West Melbourne City Council Workshop to order. It's June 20th, 2023. If you'd stand for the pledge and a silent meditation. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Maybe seated? Here, can we have city roll call for all of us? I wanted to say city council meeting, but this is a workshop so far.
Mayor Rose.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frampton.
Here.
Councilmember Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Dipmore.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Good to have everyone here at the workshop. So today's workshop is our last of a series of our budget workshop, and we're going to discuss the upcoming 22, 23 criteria, what we want. No decision be made today. Our next meeting, which is the last meeting in July, we will actually set the preliminary budget to be sent out. Mr. City Manager, it's all yours now.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone taking the time out of their day to meet with Finance Director Blake and myself to run through the budget. We have a PowerPoint presentation that's kind of a combination of some things, a little bit different than the staff memo, just trying to mix things up and keep things a little fresh. And so we'll jump into the PowerPoint presentation and then do a quick recap of the staff memo and walk us through the next steps of this budget process. So feel free to jump in at any time with any questions or comments. And we will continue to try to provide the best information we can as we get into this budget process. So before you hear is just an overall chart here of our revenues. Again, ad valorem taxes make up about 30% of the revenue, general fund revenue that comes into the city of West Melbourne. We are fortunate enough to have other sources of revenue, and so we are very diversified, and that really helps. The communities that I've managed in the past, it usually is really heavy, 60, sometimes 70%, on property taxes, and we're lucky enough to have enough diversity to not weather the storm of the tax crunch. And so that's one of the reasons for this chart, just kind of pointing that out. On the expenditure side, should be no surprise to anybody, long, long to government, no offense to our fantastic police chief, but public safety makes up the lion's share of the expenditures of our general fund budget, which is very typical, building department, public works. Again, most of our budget is made up of staff, and so you just point to the largest staff departments, and that tends to follow suit with the expenses. Just want to go through as quickly as everyone's comfortable. We kind of picked out the top 10 projects that the city of West Melbourne is going to enter into next year. And these are, these are not the total cost of the project. These are the dollar amounts that we think we're going to spend in 23, 24 in that budget cycle. And so we're identifying them. Of course, everyone's familiar with our Sheridan Rowan Septic to Sewer project. We just got awarded some additional funds, and so we'll be notifying the residents of the 13 homes along Sheridan that they'll now be part of this program, and so we'll be adjusting, adjusting that project, starting with the scope of service, and then add in, add in those 13 homes to the existing Septic to Sewer projects. So we're excited about that. We continue with the three water wells, the three production wells, and then the three monitoring wells. So that's about 2.6. That project is underway and going well, but slow and steady is how you drill wells. So that will continue into the continuing budget year. Treatment plan improvements, we refer to it as the BNR, bio nutrient removal. Altogether, it's close to $8 million, but we, we think we'll get about $2 million out of this first year, making some improvements to the sewer plants. We're very excited about that. New building department, building next door, we'll continue to move forward with that. And so we think we'll spend about $1,009,000 next year on that project. Two of these together, we consider them the Melbourne Estates project, the CDBG project, involves both flood risk reduction and water main replacements. Just had an update meeting with our engineer today, and they said we're about 40% complete on that total project between the two different avenues. And so that project's going well, but under construction and moving forward. New city council chambers, obviously is tied to the new building department building, and so we think we'll spend about $1 million next year on the budget as part of that project. Designing of the new water plant, we continue to work with Hazen and Associates on trying to lock down the final design and ultimately be able to present, probably in August, have the consultants come and present that design and walk through the 3D renderings and some of the items that go along with what the new water plant will look like and what it'll do. Hollywood Boulevard's reuse, we are out for bid on the Hollywood reuse main project. Again, about a million dollar project, but by the time we get the contract signed and them starting, that'll be a 23, 24 budget project. Norfolk Parkway reuse main, I'm sorry, Norfolk Parkway and Shallow Creek Traffic Signal Project, again, good project. By the time we get it out to bid, that'll, that'll definitely be a 23, 24 project, anticipating about $750,000 for that. And then our runner-up, our close but no cigar 11th project that we wanted to mention tonight is our paving and milling. We obviously do the annual paving and milling. Westbrook Neighborhood and all the roads associated with Westbrook are the next up in the list based on the rating system and our five-year plan. And so we'll be along with a couple other little side roads that we need to clean up. We will be invading the Westbrook Neighborhood next year when we do our paving, mill and overlay program. So very hard to read a slide. We can't have a slide. We got to have at least one slide in the slide deck that's difficult to read, but, but we want to, we want to capture all this great data. So we, we continue to monitor and brag about the amazing job that the staff and the team in West Melbourne does to get grant money and continue to get grant money. Here's a overlay of where we sit with all that grant money, including ARPA. That total, in case it's too small in the, in the bottom right corner, is $31,973,608 of county, state, federal funds and district funds, canal district funds and St. John's Water Management District Funds. Those are all of our grants that are on the table that we continue to work through those projects. So if you, you look at the left side of that, that's kind of the, the list of what's what for major projects in the city of West Melbourne. We are very proud to have almost all of them grant funded at this time and continue to effort forward with all those. So that's a great job to the team here in West Melbourne. Next, we just want to say, we've had a little bit of change here in West Melbourne in the last year, and so we wanted our, kind of point out that change. If you can see, this picture was exactly one year ago. And so there, you know, former Chief Wiley and of course, retired city manager Scott Morgan and others in this picture. And, and tonight we took the new picture of our department head team. We're minus one, but this, this is the group here as we move forward, and you will see a lot of new faces, new smiles, kind of pointing out the, the adjustment and the change in, that we've had here in West Melbourne as we continue to march forward and provide good service to the residents. As mentioned in our one-on-one briefings, we are not looking to add any staff this year. So we are looking to keep the same number of employees in 23, 24 as we did in 22, 23. But we do have some reorganizations, and so the finance department here, if you can see their org chart, kind of balanced out the org chart. It was very vertical. Now it's, it's balanced out a little bit. Utility billing, operations manager reports to the finance director, and then the accounting operations manager reports to the finance director. And so able to kind of allow the finance director to reorganize her department into the efficient operation that it continues to be. Slight change in public works that we've talked about in the past here, but wanted to point out in the org chart, again, bringing the parks department out of park and rec and bringing them over under the direction of Director Picarello, under the public works department. And so this kind of lays out our full public work staff and their operations that they do on a daily basis. And then slight reorganization in the police department. And so one of the items that the police department is now going to be taking on is they're going to have the two code enforcement officers under the police department. But they, we have the new org chart with the police chief, the deputy chief, and then the two patrol commanders. And so there's, one of them is filled, one of them is vacant. And then those lieutenants report to the commanders and the sergeants report to the lieutenants. These boxes don't represent each employee. These boxes just represent the employee categories in the org chart. So very excited to take that on. And again, as we move forward, the important meeting, not a lot of official action this evening needed. The official action starts July 18th, and that is when we'll have to set the millage rate. Again, you can set the millage rate and always go lower, but you cannot set the millage rate and go higher. And so something to think about as we roll forward into budgets, finishing out the budget. We will then get our trim worksheets complete and then follow the, the public hearing process in order to be able to meet the deadline for the state and get those little magical tax bills out in the mail to all of our residents. And so again, as discussed, we're, we're talking about a balanced budget here in West Melbourne and talking about with, with using the numbers rollback. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
September 6th and 20th, those are hard dates now. We confirm those. They don't interfere with the school board?
You are correct. We, we had to adjust some of our meetings in order to avoid other municipal entities that are having their public hearings, which we can't have two public hearings on the same night for taxing, taxing authorities. So we have to stay off of the school board and the county commissions evenings and have adjusted accordingly. So please mark your calendars, and we will have our, our clerk send out an email reminder to the council to adjust your schedules that will be shifting over to Wednesdays.
Thank you.
So let's talk a little bit about rollback. So the proposed budget, balanced budget that I'm putting forward does use rollback as the tax rate, which puts us at $2, 2.0081 as our rollback dollar, and that generates $5.25 million in revenue at ad valorem. To give an option, 5% increase would be $2.05, and that would generate about $125,000 additional dollars for the city of West Melbourne. So for those reasons, we're proposing a rolled back budget. Able to put everything together. Big kudos to the department heads. Great group to work with, respectful of the taxpayer dollars and trying to get, maximize as much work as possible for the city of West Melbourne. And so big kudos to them and a very warm thank you and appreciation to Candace Blake, Finance Director, who just did a fine, fantastic job putting this all together and really just knocked it out of the park this year with our budget. So with that, again, no formal action. Happy to take any questions, comments, concerns. We'll go through the staff memo a little bit that has a little bit more detail, but wanted to point out these items. And then as we move forward, we will be printing and issuing the full line item budget to the council.
If we kept the current millage rate 2.11, what would these numbers look like?
So 211 is about a 9% increase, which is about $300,000 in additional revenue.
Addition to which one?
Addition to the rollback.
Okay.
It'd be about $300,000 additional funds.
What's that?
About 5.5 total.
Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on that project with those wells. Are those concurrently being, or is that going to be separate? You wait for one, finish one, do the next?
They are. They, they like to, they like to play hide and seek with Tom Bradford and Mark Picker, Director Picarello. Whenever you start your day trying to go to one well site to see how they're doing, they inevitably are at another well site. So we have three production wells going in, Clements Wood, Tallwood and Offbostow, and they continue to, no rhyme or reason, pick one site and work on it and work on it for sometimes three days, sometimes two days, and then jump to another site and continue to go. So they are, they are continuing. They're doing a great job. You know, we've run into some hiccups that are normal in the well drilling business, but they continue to push through on those three well sites.
Deputy Mayor Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rody, I was advocate of a public relations officer and stuff, and I know we had a conversation about that earlier today, and I just wanted to share your idea. I wanted you to share your idea of what you were thinking we were going to do, just so I can hold you to the fire on it and say it's on the record.
There we go. So over the years, the topic of, you know, kind of a PR employee or a kind of a, you know, modern, modern day ability for an employee to just be dedicated, communicating our message, you know, social media, all the platforms. Because of the time-consuming nature, many communities have adopted a position or two for those roles in the community. We've looked at it. I know that they've looked at it in the past here. One of the items that I certainly have interest in, in rolling out, we do have one position in the, as we moved over the two code enforcement officers over to the police department that had some admin capacity in order to help those people out on the admin side. The existing admin position for code enforcement is unfilled. That person did take another position in the city of West Melbourne and the building department. And so that is an unfilled position. I made a commitment to the chief that I would leave that unfilled and in place in case admin-wise, they needed some additional support. And we'll know that here in the next couple of months when that, when those employees roll over to the police department. If they are able to take care of that additional administrative items that are needed for code enforcement, that would leave that position open with some flexibility to be able to convert that into more of a, you know, PR person or a modern day social media influencer for the city of West Melbourne.
So why not just put one in the budget now for it and instead of the maybe, if possible?
Yeah.
Chief, I would say I'd need the position. So, I mean, I'm just curious.
Just trying to give us some flexibility to make sure we have, you know, the current staff supported. If we have the current staff supported, then I think that leaves that position available to be able to be flexible.
I agree with being flexible, so be flexible and maybe add another position. Thank you.
Ms. Adams, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I will piggyback on the deputy mayor's comments just because Mr. Rody and I have had that conversation about a PIO for the city, considering that we're growing. So I won't hammer that point necessarily, considering the request has been made. I do think it's something we will need as the city continues to grow, looking at how large we are considering the rest of Brevard County. My other specific question had to do with page 42 in our staff report. It had stated that our revenue estimate, looking at it, is 5.4% more than the adopted general fund revenue budget from last year. And so I'm looking at if we're expecting that 5.4 increase necessarily, then how from a resident perspective would we be justifying a recommendation for a rolled back rate? That make sense?
I'm sorry, you have me, unless I misunderstand that, I'm, I'm confused.
I'm also confused. I need some clarification, please.
Okay, no problem. Looking at, so if our, if our revenue that's coming in is going to be more, right? And we're expecting that rollback, rollback rate to be lower, but we've got this list of projects, right? And then we've got additional projects, we've got additional staff that could or could not be considered. So we're basically saying, since we're getting this increased revenue, then we can justify that rolled back rate if we're not adding any additional projects, correct? If we do look at the budget and we're saying-
Correct. This, this is the proposed budget that I'm making, correct?
Right. So anything else that in the future, if prices are going higher on any of these projects that we're looking at, the ones for the next year as we budget for future years, that's the number we're expecting them to come in at? We've already taken into consideration the inflation rate and everything else for these proposed projects, correct?
The best we could, correct. We have, we asked the engineers to estimate with, with current inflation based on when we are going to bid the project.
Okay. Just looking at it, thinking, well, we did a rolled back rate last year. We're looking at a rolled back rate twice, and we do have increased growth in the city. So that's definitely offsetting, you know, concerns for the budget. I just know then we look at increasing the list of projects and everything else. So I wanted to make sure we were good there. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that because those are my thoughts exactly. I don't like the rollback rate. I mean, I love no taxes, but in the scheme of things, even with your engineers' estimates, have we had one project in the city that came under budget this last year? No, I'll answer that for you. So even, even though we do overestimate those projects, we, most of those are coming way over budget. That's just the reality of inflation and cost of materials. Also, I think we do have a pretty good list of things that we've talked about as a council doing. And these are no order, but what I wrote down was we are talking about a water plant, which will cost quite a bit of money and a lot more than we originally thought because of interest rates and such. We're talking about a fire department putting money away. Even if we kept the same millage that we have today and squirreled money away for that, if it happens or it doesn't, it's still, it could be in the general fund, it can be used. Field of Dreams reared its ugly head and requiring anywhere near a million dollars that's not even budgeted for maintenance of that thing. The building department, we're putting a low number in that, 1.9 million, but we're also adding a council chamber, another million. We are talking about drainage projects, and those grants we have are matching funds. And so we got, what, $750,000? We have to match that at least, I believe, for that. And we didn't get the other grant we're looking at. We're looking at, and today's agenda, park renovations and what we want with that, and we don't know what that's going to cost. Also, we're talking about maybe knocking this building down we're sitting in and putting a gym or rec center. That's a few dollars. And that's just to name a few things. I mean, I'm sure there's other things that we think about doing and just not, we do have a low millage rate, and yes, you have to add fire back into that and different things. But I don't think we had one person last year that said, yay, we rolled it back a couple cents for household. And, you know, $300,000 this year would, would buy quite a bit, I would think, or at least towards that, whether it's the position, whether it's money that goes into savings. I don't know when the savings enough, but we have a lot of projects on our plate. We know that. So that's my thoughts. Mr. Dipmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm just going to go on the record and say I do not support raising the taxes, which that would be, if we do not do the rollback, we are in fact raising the taxes. Mr. Rody, when I spoke to you on the phone the other day, you mentioned, I asked you about the carryover, the projection, projections that we had. What's the carryover from this year?
So if you want to jump to 4-... Bear with me, bear with me. My little mouse is scrolling. Bear with me. 4-13 in the agenda, the staff memo, has our general fund, has all of our reserves, but our general fund reserve, our unassigned general fund reserve is $11,195,000. We have 4.6 million in our transportation reserve, which is our developer impact fee money for roadway, either capacity or safety improvements. Building department has 3 million, and then other reserve, which is, you know, funds coming in and out, designated for specific items that we have to hold that for. So our total general fund is 19.3 million, but 11.1 of that is unassigned and the ability of the council to designate those funds as long, for the most part, because there are tax dollars coming in, anything that involves West Melbourne, those funds would be eligible for.
I just want to confirm. So we are seeing an increase or it looks like it's a decrease on here, but?
We are, we are estimating an increase by the end of the 23, 24 budget.
Of how much?
Almost another million and change. So we're, our total, we're estimating the total fund, unreserved fund, unassigned fund balance will be $12.8 million at the end of 24.
12.8?
12.8.
From up from 11.1?
Correct.
That's a million seven. Huh? No, 11.1 to 12.8?
11, 11, almost 11.2 to 12.8.
So a million six. Yes, so with the million six extra, I don't, I know we have to, we have some other obligations this year. I just, I can't support raising taxes on anyone when we're having this million six. We've go through this every year. Every year that we've raised it because we've needed extra money, we've always had extra money. I mean, is there, I can't think going back over the last, since I've been here five years, where we've not added money to the, to the, to the reserve, to the unassigned. What did you call it again? The unassigned?
Unassigned reserve.
Thank you. The unassigned reserve. We've continuously done that and raised taxes at the same time. And, and what's our requirement, the minimum we're supposed to have?
So the city code talks about 20% unassigned reserve for the, for the general fund operation. So our general fund budget's about 17, so 20% of 17-
3.4?
Which we are well-
Four. So four million. So it'd be safe to say that we're three times the amount?
Comfortable.
Okay. So I just don't see the, the need to raise taxes when we're three times what we're, what we're required to have. So, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, just for the record though, if we did go back to rollback- Mr. City Manager, just for the record, though, if we did go back to rollback, as opposed to what Mr. Dipmore said, going all the way back to rollback is by definition a tax increase? Yes, no?
Well, your, your rollback rate brings you, brings you, yeah, I mean, well, no, I guess, know that your home value has gone up, right? So each individual property is going to be slightly different.
But the answer is yes, according to state statute.
You, you could easily pay the city of West Melbourne a dollar more in property taxes next year than you did last year with rollback, based on your specific circumstances with your home. But you might not, because some homes didn't go up, didn't go up in value, some homes did, some homes are part of the value protection. So there's, there's lots of characteristics, which is why, you know, we put together the infamous chart on, on 418, which has about a dozen or about 10 property owners that have been in their homes since at least 12 years, and it has the local taxes that they have paid to West Melbourne for the last 12 years, and, and some of them have gone up a few bucks and some of them have gone down a few bucks. But for the most part, we, we point out this chart that it's very consistent that the taxes have been, the ad valorem taxes have been very consistent over the last 12 years here in West Melbourne.
If, if we did go up to roll, our current millage rate is 2.11, how much would the average West Melbourne resident pay extra? Or some of them wouldn't pay extra, but the ones that do pay extra.
It would be, it would be a tax increase of 9%. So that would be up nine.
No, but save our homes, doesn't allow 9%.
Right. So, but, so you asked a question I can't give you an answer to because every home is a little bit different, but if we're raising taxes 9%-
I don't think it works that way. I mean, there's a number that the average house will go up in West Melbourne if the, if the rate is 2.11, we can tell with the average, because just like you can tell what rollback will be.
We're going to generate 9% more revenue, the only way we're going to do it is by getting it from each individual property owner at a percentage. Some of them may, again, if your home went up in value, if you were reassessed and your assessor puts you up in value, you might pay a little bit more. If they put you down in value, you might pay a little bit less, but I'm happy to run these 10 property owners.
It'd be good to have some new property owners as opposed to the old time.
And we could do that, you know, part of the challenge, what's nice about this chart is that all of these people have been in their homes for at least 12 years, so you can see the progression, but we can add some new ones.
But I think the only fallacy to what you're saying is, West Melbourne collects tax from homeowners, from non-homeowners, from businesses and such, and what, 60 or 70% of our revenue is from non-home, non-homesteaded property. So again, while it sounds like we're really increasing, we're really, you know, Walmart and all those are paying majority of this, of this bill. Mr. Bentley, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roddy, would you say you were conservative when you made the estimates for the cost of these items?
The projects?
Yeah.
No, because what, what we've learned is that the engineer's estimate used to be a conservative number, but based on the inflationary, so we go off of F dots. F dot has a monthly inflationary number that also projects 18 months into the future, and so we've been going off of F dots inflationary construction estimates, which seem to be more in line with what the bidding committee is right now.
So, thank you.
As an example, sorry, as an example, Hollywood Estates reuse, when we first talked about that, when, when the city first talked about that about three years ago, we thought it was about a $700,000 project. Our current, when we went out to bid, our current engineer's estimate is now a million dollars.
So we've got right at almost 19, 20 million dollars in reserves, 11 of it completely unrestricted. As I understand it, we went up something on the order of a million and a half last year. We went up two million the year before that. We're scheduled to go up about 1.6 million this year. So I guess I'm not understanding when is enough is enough. We are only getting 40% of our revenue from ad valorem. We are seeing a substantial increase in the other fields, for example, Florida Power and Light, electricity's going up probably $25 a month in the last three months. We get franchise fee from Florida Power and Light, and that is going to go up as a percentage of what they've gone up. If you look at our utility taxes, they've gone up, we get a utility tax on that. So in many of the other categories, other than just ad valorem, we are substantially increasing the amount of tax that we get. We seem kind of focused on ad valorem, but again, 60% of our budget is for an area outside of our ad valorem. So, you know, if we're going to be cautious there, why, why aren't we looking at making cuts and perhaps even, I'm being facetious here, but for example, eliminating the, the franchise. We were formed as a city 50, 60, almost 60 years ago, and we did not have an ad valorem tax, so the city was forced at that time to come up with other areas to collect a tax base from. And we've done it, that's why we're very well-rounded now in our tax base. Unlike other cities who basically, most of them have gone off just strictly ad valorem taxes or to a large percent that. And so, I don't know, as long as we keep putting money away, keep meeting our annual goal, exceeding our annual goals, because we're meeting everything that we plan on doing. I've not seen a project that we've really wanted to do that we haven't done, so I don't think it's a funding, you may argue about how many projects can we do in a single year, but I think we're doing things at a pretty healthy rate. And I don't know, I think this is, this is something I would support. If we had done something and, and the numbers weren't showing what they are, I'd be for a tax increase. I don't care whether it's a political year or not. It's, we, we need to do what's right for the, things that we plan on doing and the money that we have coming in. We have more than enough money coming in to accomplish everything plus a lot of extra that may be unforeseen. I was willing to spend a million bucks in the last meeting to help with the field of drains maintenance. We've already put that, as I understand it, in this year's budget, so it's done. And, and, and so what we're proposing includes that, that million dollar expenditure, and we're still doing well financially. So I don't know, at some point, I think you, you need to say, we're getting a 9.2% increase, five, depending on how you do things out here, but over a 9% increase because of the home tax that's gone up this year. Again, we're increasing ad valorem, we're increasing utility tax. I think at some point enough is enough and, and, and cutting back the ad valorem, I think is the right thing to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to be clear, the reason that I had asked about the incoming revenue wasn't because I thought that we should be raising that tax rate, it was to be clear on how we were prioritizing our projects. Looking at what we're bringing in and looking at the cost of these projects, I wanted to make sure we were good to be able to move forward. I think when you look at the year that, that the city has gone through, that our residents have gone through, as we see, you know, all of our utilities continue to have the increase, and we're expecting, you know, our, our waste, when that goes out to bid and comes back, we're expecting that to have an increase. I think as we look at that and then we look at the healthy reserves of the city, I think a, a rollback rate is completely justified, but I think something to consider for the next however many years forward, at some point, we're not going to be able to do a consistent rollback rate year after year. So that's what I wanted to think ahead for. Mr. Roddy, with where we're at now in the city, we've been able to sustain this healthy amount of reserve because of the, of the growth that we've had, both in our apartments and our businesses, things like that. So when do you expect that growth to be just about wrapped up in terms of the, the increased revenue we've been seeing?
So we continue to have these conversations relative to items like when we go out for RFP, which we are right now for waste hauling. They want to know our growth. We've, we've hired the Bieber's, you know, group in order to help project our growth better because we needed that for our consumptive use permit for the water utility and the water plant. We continue to have those discussions, again, on the sewer plant side because obviously water goes out as potable water and it comes back as other things, and so we need to be able to manage that. And so our, our Bieber estimate, we continue to talk about that, our growth, again, barring some kind of abnormal economic condition happening, we think will hit full growth in 10 years.
Okay. And about that 10-year mark is when we're going to see that, that decrease from the revenue we've been seeing recently?
Correct. We will start to see a decrease in the net new construction because again, we will still have, you know, those, people will still remodel, you know, Burger Kings will become Taco Bell's, all that stuff will continue to happen, but nothing on the scale of, of, you know, the, you know, 30, 30, 35 million dollar projects that are coming in consistently today.
Okay. So I think that's something to be looking at as we get closer to that 10-year mark, but not necessarily today. Are we going to be using the Promise in Brevard residents and their mail system to be able to send out those tax bills, or are we strictly only using them for the water?
Yeah, we do not put out the tax bills. So the county puts out the tax bills. We'd be happy to mention that to them next time we're at a county meeting.
So we're hoping the county will make some sort of transition?
Be happy to mention that to them, but I do not know, I do not get into how the tax bills get out the door. We, we have a strict deadline of when we have to have our number to them, and that's, that's when our relationship ends.
Figured I had to try. Thank you, sir.
Deputy Mayor Francis, you're next.
I'm sorry, Ms. Adams, it sounded like a flip-flop to me. Sounded like you were saying we needed the increase and then not saying we needed it. I'm confused, I'm not for the increase. We're going to be, we're going to be raising essentially fees to our customers and our community for water increase and waste increase and, and we have these, they're going to be feeling it. I don't, I don't think we need to do it here. I really think as long as we're able to put money away in our, in our reserves, I, I think we keep doing the rollback. If we get, if we get to a point where we're down, you know, to not having a lot of money to put away, then maybe it's time at that point, and, and I just, I can't see it at this time. Field of Dreams, did you tell me that we may be doing that project this year, or will that be?
Yeah, we, we are going to do it in the 23, I'm sorry, 22-23 budget year.
Right. So that million dollars, that would, is that including?
That would come out of our current operational budget.
And we'd still put a one point.
And we still plan to put money in reserve.
So, I mean-
But we don't know, we don't-
And, and all the budget, all the, all the projects that the mayor mentioned were budgeted for 23-24, right? It wasn't, we don't have unfunded projects that we promoted for that year, right?
The list, yeah, the, and this is just the top 10 list, but this list that's up on, you know, that's up on the screen, those are, you know, those are all budgeted projects. I'm not quite sure if that answered your question.
None of the mayor said, it's not his list, so I don't know what list, what, oh, the list, that's, they're not the same projects you mentioned, is that what you're saying?
Right. Well, some of them are, but most of them aren't.
But I mean, the tearing down of this building, this is not going to happen, that's not going to happen in 23 or 24 budget and-
We do have money in the budget to evaluate this building and what we do moving forward. We do not have demo-
For the next budget cycle are funded and accounted for. Well, I say funded, but accounted for in the budget.
All the budgets, all the, all the, the, all the budget priorities of the council are budgeted for, and then all of our capital projects are budgeted for.
Thank you.
Mr. McDowell? I'm sorry, Ms. Young and then Mr. McDowell.
Well, it seems like we all had the same issues when we all had our individual meetings. It was kind of surprising to hear that with all the projects that we have planned, I mean, there's a lot of them and none of them are inexpensive, that we could still even think of a rollback. And when I sat there with Mr. Roddy, I, I tried to stump him, I tried to find any project I could think of that he hadn't thought of, and what if this happens and what if that happens? And I listed the projects we have here, plus the ones that the mayor listed, and anything else I could think of off the top of my head, and he still has it funded. He seems to have taken that into consideration, and it's due to the growth that we've had. We have more people paying into the funds, so therefore we need less and less from each individual person even to do it right. I just think, I'm very fortunate to live in this amazing city where we've been able to have the progress and the success that we've had with the things that we have. So I'm very happy to be able to support a rollback, even, even though I just, I just find it stunning that we can do that, that we can provide for our residents and have a rollback, especially when we know things are coming up like the water increase and the, and the waste haulers and things that we know are coming up, and those have still been factored into this. So I just wanted to put that comment in there, that I did try to, did try to find something that he hadn't thought of, that we couldn't possibly have a rollback, but I couldn't stump him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. So in the 12-year period that we had seen the growth happen, we, do we have any idea of how much of that was, how that breaks out or shakes out far as residential, commercial, things of that sort? And the reason I'm asking is going forward in that next 10 years, do we have any projections what that's going to look like? Is it going to replicate where we're at today? Is it going to look different? Will we have more commercial opportunity, things of that sort? And just for the record, I am definitely on board with the rollback.
So I think our, we've had tremendous growth, obviously the council's aware, you know, with the multifamily, the hotels, the commercial, the sprouts, the, you know, commercial comes in lots of different forms, it's not just multifamily development, it's also those hotels and, and shopping centers that have come in. Single-family growth has been incredible. We continue to not have, you know, DR Horton is moving forward with some of their spec homes, but we went for almost a year without a single-family home, brand new, you couldn't buy a brand-new single-family home in West Melbourne. We didn't have one. We didn't have one for sale, developers were trying to get sites ready, all the ones that had been built were gone, and so, so single-family homes, we will start to run out of again because again, they take up a large quantity of space and those sites have all been acquired. So we will start to move out of the last of the single-family here in the next three to five years, and then it will transition to commercial and multifamily because again, we all know the Space Coast Town Center has a big, you know, plot of land available, there aren't any planned single-family home developments in there, it's all commercial and multifamily and hotels and, and grocery stores and gas stations and whatnot, so it'll start to shift.
Yeah, I think we all agree that nobody likes tax increases or, as Mr. Bentley said, all those fees going up for waste management and Florida Power and Light and all those things. But the only thing I was trying to make the council aware of is, you don't build a fire department overnight with the money that we have. You don't build a, a water plant for 25-plus million without borrowing money, and same with a new recreation multi-rec room here overnight. It's not a one-year budget, it takes every year to set money aside. And while having money in the general fund, we can use for anything we want, basically, it's nice to have dedicated funds. For example, every department puts in every month, every year, money for the replacement of the car, so we have it, right? We have it. I would just like to see the council do kind of the same thing. If you are doing big projects, maybe it takes three to five years to get enough cash to do it, because this council doesn't like to borrow money. And I think that's just responsible government, when we, if you have the money, you buy it, if you don't, let's not borrow unless we have to. I know we don't have money for the water plant, I know we don't have money for the fire department if that comes aboard, I know we don't have money for this new building, $3 to $5 million. So unless we take it all out of reserve, but I don't think management or council wants to take all that money out of reserve just because we have it. It's just good to sit there and for those real expenses that we might need.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Respectfully, Mayor, I think our city staff and our city manager are budgeting for those items. We see, you know, the, the water production wells in our budget. He knows that these large projects are going to come forward, so I don't think we're going to see at the end when the project is built, or even at the beginning, before we start construction on the water department, build, you know, all of that space, and Mr. Roddy can correct me if I'm wrong, but he's not going to come to council with an X-million-dollar bill that says we need you to pay all of it today. I think that's built into the budgets. Sir, am I correct?
So you are correct. So let's, let's break those three down, because they're all, they're all three kind of unique animals. of unique animals. So the water plant, as we know, we have already invested several million dollars in the infrastructure, including the, the biggest project, the M1 backbone, to get our, to put in place the West Melbourne water backbone and, and, and get off of, and get prepared to get off of, as we currently are, the Melbourne backbone, which is part, which is in 192. So, so that was the start of the big, that was the start of the commitment. In addition, now we are at the stage of smaller looping projects, including the three wells and then the three monitoring wells. So that piece of the puzzle, combined with the one production well that we already built in order to be able to test our, our water and, and prove that it's going to work and, and make sure we have the right formula built into the plant. All comes to a head here in the next couple of months, when Hazen and Associates will present with myself, the plan for the water plant, how much it will cost, and then with Stantec's rate analysis, be able to put together how the rates and, and the borrowing structure will work. We will absolutely have to borrow for the plant. It has always been planned to borrow for. We do want to spread those costs over the life of the people who live here over those years and not just get the people who live here today and, and might move out. So, so that will be coming forward, and, and that plan has been well in place and continues, if you, you know, based on the gift of ARPA, that we've used a lot of that ARPA money towards water. So that, that takes care of, of our water operation plan as we move forward. The second one was this building, so talking about doing something. I think the council, there's a consensus on the council that this building has had its day, that some kind of rec facility, modern rec facility that a lot of communities have and offer to their residents, whether it's here, at the park, at a location that we're not even thinking about, gets built and, and funded. Again, looking at that, we do get rec impact fees. We could look at different impact fees, some of the impact fees that we don't currently charge. And so there's different revenue sources that could help. But that plan will come together and hopefully be part of, you know, one of the action items for tonight, which is the parks, space, future land use. So the last one, the fire department, is, is a little bit more of an unknown as it continues to move forward. We do have a presentation tonight from Stantec, who will be walking through what they put together and, and getting feedback and, and providing what they put together in order to build that rate structure, whether it's general fund taxes, whether it's fees, whether it's a combination thereof, or just one of, you know, talking about that process as they move forward, do an evaluation of our general fund operations, do an evaluation of the community, and then project out and give us some options. And so that we will need in order to go to a referendum. And so in order to get to a referendum, you got to have all those questions answered, and, and bond council, again, will be also involved in that, so that the, the wording is correct. And so there's a lot of steps that we'll be needing to check off. To the mayor's point, we did talk about, as a council, we did talk about putting some money aside for a future fire department. And so, I mean, that is more of a political decision than a logistical one in this budget, so.
It looks to me like we have a healthy budget, we have our healthy reserves. I think we're planning appropriately for the future, especially in the next few years, 10 years out we'll be thinking, but the next few years look really good, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. As, as the old saying I think goes, that all good things must come to an end. And I think, once West Melbourne stops growing, and, and I don't think we're there yet, I think we're five-plus years away from that, then I think we will come to a point that we probably first level off and just go with the, the military without rolling it back. And then I think we're probably eventually, I won't be here, on the council by then, but, but I think eventually we'll end up where we start raising it like other cities are doing. Once you stop the growth, this, this equation gets a lot more difficult for rolling things back or even keeping them the same. But it is nice to be able to take advantage of them while we are in this growth and be responsible and put money away for any eventual thing that can come up. So, you know, I'm pleased that we're able to do this, and I just think there is a time, I'm, I'm not crazy here, there is a time when all this is going to come to an end, and, and it's when the growth stops, whenever that happens to be.
I mean, we all don't have a crystal ball, but I, I do like the chart that you have here, because it's a good chart for us. It's the average price that each citizen pays for taxes. West Melbourne, $185 per person, where Cocoa Beach is $1,430 per person.
$1,430?
$1,430 per person. Four dash 16.
Four 16, four 16.
So it just, comparing all 16 cities, the one that's little less than us is, the only one is Grant, and they, there's $154 a person. And it goes up substantially from there to all the other cities. So looking at it that way, it's a good value. It's hard to compare apples with apples, because some of those cities don't have police or fire, some of them don't have fire, some of them don't, some of them do. So there's a lot of different things. And Cocoa Beach's behalf, and the last thing I'll say about Cocoa Beach is, you know, they only have a little over 9,000 people in their city, but the weekends, they probably have three times that amount. So it's a different creature. But as far as our budget, go forth and move on. Anything else you have?
Nope, just a reminder that, again, we'll have it on the, we'll have a PowerPoint more specific to ad valorem. We will be proposing the rollback, but we will give several options to consider, and whatever the council makes a final action on, they can always go down, but they can't go up.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, we will take a recess and begin the meeting at 6 o'clock.